Nothing's really changed.
Did they bring the plaques out? Did they bring the plaques out?
Hey, Mike, you got a minute for Vicki?
We're in the back room here.
Thank God. No keys, though.
Is she doing? You did. You said something about her being fifty. Is she good?
No.
So I didn't see anything to finish. Is it?
No, no, no. It is. You love me for it, too, I'm sure.
Can Vicki have one? Thank you.
I'm ready.
Everyone ready? Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call the meeting to order. Would everyone please stand for a short prayer and a salute to our flag? Almighty God, grant us the wisdom to make those decisions that are in the best interest of all our residents. May the Heavenly Father of us all bless those who have given the ultimate sacrifice in service to our nation, and may He watch over and protect our service men and women now guarding the gates of freedom. Salute to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Terry, notice of publication.
Mayor, take notice of this regular meeting of the Mayor and Borough Council being held on the fourteenth day of December, 2015, has been advertised and posted in accordance with Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975.
Roll call.
Councilperson Buchanan.
Here.
Kilpatrick.
Here.
McGill.
Yeah.
Melendez.
Here.
Novak.
Here.
Rittenhouse.
Here.
Okay, are there any meaning?
There are no minutes.
There are no prayers. So at this time, I'm going to ask the President of the Board of Education, Mike McEnam.
Thank you, Mayor. Mike McEnam, President of the Board of Ed, member of the Save for Planning Board. Mr. Mayor, members of the governing body, I think you know why I'm here tonight. I just wanted to follow up with the pilot discussions that we had at the last two meetings. I know it was mentioned that the intention of the council was to possibly make a decision by the end of the year, and I think we're at that point. Last time that we discussed this, there were some issues about looking at the numbers to see what those look like in order for the council to make an informed decision, and also whether there's any legal matters that could prevent the Board of Education getting its percentage of the pilot as we would on anything that's traditionally taxed. So I was just looking for an update. We do have a Board of Education meeting tomorrow, and I wanted to be able to update the board on what's going on.
Mike, you have a report?
Yeah, I do, Mayor. There, I've looked at the statute, and the statute doesn't specifically prohibit same, but it does not explicitly permit same. So there is an issue regarding the clarity of that. And so what I have done, and I've prepared a memo, and I've also, my next step, though, is to speak to the Department of Education, because the statute, it does not specifically prohibit it.
Right.
But it does not explicitly permit it. So there is cases out there that says that you can only do that which is permitted, not that which is explicitly prohibited. So I'm looking for a little guidance myself from the Department of Education, because statute is pretty, it's not black and white. It's a little gray with that specification.
That's why we need lawyers.
Right, which is a good thing.
Right.
So, you know, we put out phone calls to the Department of Education. And that's where I am with respect to my investigation.
I think even if there was something that prohibited, I'm certainly that at the Board, the borough collecting the taxes, we could enter a contract, some type of agreement with the Borough Council to get that money distributed to the Board of Ed. Having said that, what I take from that is that that's not going to be a hurdle that we have to overcome in illegal matters.
Well, sometimes, sometimes in the past, we do have precedent where we will agree to something predicated on it being verified with Department of Community Affairs or the Board of Education. This could well be one of those times where we're not breaking new ground, but we are showing our intent of saying that this pilot program will be divided in the same way any normal tax revenue is divided within the borough observable. So if anyone wanted to make a motion to that effect, I don't think it would be out of line. Subject to corroboration by the Department of Community Affairs would probably be the better place than the Board of Education, since they are the ones that basically have our over municipalities in our state.
Sure.
I would make that motion, Mayor.
Is there a second? Is there a second? All right, so that motion dies for a second. I'm sorry, Council.
Mr. McEnam, one of the things that I had stated, in addition to having the attorney consult, was that I wanted to see some of the numbers and the figures from our CFO.
Right.
I still haven't received that. So I don't want to second something without having all that information as well.
Right. Did you request that information? Because I know if I request something for my BA, I get it.
Wayne, I think it was pretty clear that...
I don't have, I don't have the final numbers from the pilot negotiations of what's going into, what are the components going into the pilot. There's going to be rab bonds involved in it. There's monies there outright for the Board of Education, I believe around $19 million.
No, no, no. I think you're talking about, this is a different pilot. He's referring to the pilot. And Morgan, what you're referring to, I believe, is the point. So there's two different pilots, but I don't think that's what you were discussing.
Well, obviously, both have impacted us, but the one that impacts us soonest is obviously the Route 35.
And that's what, yeah.
And that's going to affect us, this coming school budget that we're working on right now. And of course, the point with 2,000 residential units, that's going to have a greater fiscal impact on us in the out years.
Right.
So I guess, I guess the question I have, because I don't like to practice bleeding here, this is six weeks that, you know, I've been coming to the council meeting. I know for months we've been meeting. How do we close this loop? I mean, how do we get the numbers? How do you digest them and then come and make an informed decision in a vote, so we know as we're preparing our budgets, you know, what we're looking at financially? I guess, how does that happen?
Well, go ahead. You go.
I just wanted to say with me, I requested that Mr. Frankel look to see if other, how other towns have handled it, if anybody, instead of reinventing the wheel, see how other towns, if they have done it and how they did it. Because if they did it, then it should be kind of legal for us, as long as, you know, we keep it in the same format. So he, he was going to be investigating that.
Right. In my research, I haven't found a lot of towns that have done the pilot, because it's not advantageous to do so. And that's why I'm here, to have this conversation. So I guess I want to leave here tonight with some information, and I can relate to the Board of Education tomorrow, that where are we in this process?
I would recommend to take this in hand and instruct your business administrator to contact the Department of Community Affairs and ask for a ruling. I think, I think it'll be a more expeditions process if, in fact, you ask Amideo to research this, and you'll get an answer much quicker than you're getting one here.
Yeah, but a motion was made, and I'm curious why it wasn't second, because the motion was just to agree that the Board would get whatever that numbers are, a percentage that we're getting now for traditionally taxed properties. So based on the pilot meetings we've had and the understanding to the last two conversations, you know, I'm thinking the council should take a vote on this. And if it goes down, then we know that, too, and, you know, we can figure that in when we compute our budgeting, that we know that money's not going to be coming to the Board of Ed. And that's what I was just, you know...
I don't, I don't know the answer to that question, why, why there was no second.
I could tell you why I wouldn't. I wasn't going to second it. One of the reasons being because there were meetings that you had had with a couple of council people, three.
Right.
The discussions that were had in that meeting, I didn't receive minutes, and I did not get a lot of answers as far as what was being talked about. There was a lot of back and forth, bring it back here, take a look and see, let's get some numbers. I have concerns, I apologize, I have a mint in my mouth. I have concerns, and the reason why I wanted to see some figures was the breakdown of this pilot. I want to make sure that we can actually provide the services to that area of town once this pilot and these numbers are all worked out. If we can continue to provide services that we need to through public works and other things, and PD and this and that, and garbage, and plowing, and all of those things, by all means, we can sit down and have that discussion. I also did some of my research as well, and in reading that there would be absolutely no monies going to the Board of Education, I don't believe that's 100% accurate. You're still going to get the taxes for the land, land tax, which is going to be more as that property continues to be developed and more people begin to live there. And I did ask Dan Frankel, just like Mary, to look into what other municipalities do in relation to Board of Ed. I'm very much vested in this all the way around. I'm in that building. I see where problems may be. But most of the other municipalities, the Board comes and expresses a need, and then comes up with either a capital improvement project, and we worked hand in hand, the other municipalities worked hand in hand with the Board of Education, to see what those needs are and what those projects are. So I understand you want to have your budget in place for next year for all kinds of things, but I'm just curious as to what are the need, what do you plan on doing with that additional monies if it is in fact available? And can we sit down and have additional conversations?
You say it's additional money. Well, that's why we had a pilot committee. We had those conversations with the council.
I wasn't privy to that.
You know, council members need to talk to each other. When I have meetings, I grieve my board. We're asking for money that would normally come to the Board of Ed through taxation. If it's a pilot program, and we normally get taxed, and we receive 56% of that, we want the same, the pilot. And actually, where the money goes, we're operating a school district with an $80 million budget, and when we have more kids in the district, you know, that costs more money. And we're not asking for any additional money, just the money that we normally get through taxation. And that's, you know...
It seemed, and I was waiting on two things. I was waiting on the attorney, the attorney opinion, and I was waiting on figures for Wayne. I just received what Mr. Dupont had to say, and I'm still waiting now that Wayne, apparently you were under the assumption that this was the pilot in reference to the point, which it was not. So now there's been clarification on that point, and I don't have a problem moving forward with if we can have some real discussions.
I'm here for a real discussion tonight, and I guess I'll come back to the next meeting, and hopefully we'll have some of these things figured out as far as what the figures are. And I know, Wayne, your situation, you can't give us exact figures, but you understand what the cost is for the service that you're going to provide, as we understand what the cost to us is going to be to educate children. So I think those numbers, then, all we're asking for is that whatever that number is, that we get the same percentage that we would get when anything is traditionally taxed. And that's why pilot programs are not beneficial to the town. And as I mentioned last time, we share the same taxpayers. It's not like we have different ones. So I guess I never, did not beat a dead cost when I saw one, so...
Mike, I'll repeat my advice that I would take the initiative and have the Board of Education contact the Department of Community Affairs for an opinion on this.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I wish everybody has a, has a half a holiday. I want to thank Mr. McGill, Ms. Melendez for your service on the council.
Thank you.
Phyllis Batko, Foglin Court. We have been meeting with the Pilot Committee on this council for, I don't know, well over a year. I guess I'm a little confused, Ms. Kilpatrick. You want to see the numbers. Wayne has those numbers. He gave them to us at the pilot meeting. Why the committee hasn't given them to you, I don't know. But I'm not so sure what the numbers are going to do, if it's 100,000 or 100 million. I mean, I'm not sure. We're looking at a percentage. We started the committee, we went through these, and what we boiled down to at the end, the committee, was your committee and our committee agreeing that it would be a percentage, and we had suggested 56%. And our committee was under the impression, we, all six of us in the room, agreed upon this.
Agreed upon 56%?
Yes.
Everybody?
No, that was going to be a percentage, but the percentage was going to be...
56% was never agreed upon by the Pilot Committee. I've been, I was present at Pilot Committee meetings, and...
That's what I'm talking about.
All right. Well, let me ask you something, Ms. Kilpatrick. You said that you want to know if you can cover the costs of public works, or streets. Let me finish my question.
I'm not. Go ahead.
So you want to know if you can pick up the garbage, clean the streets. So let's just take a hypothetical, and actually, it's probably not hypothetical, it's a little over $200,000. Let's say that's the estimated number you'll receive from the Club Benet property as we're talking. If you determine that you can't clean the streets, or pick up garbage, or whatever services you need to provide, then your answer is going to be, then the school shouldn't get any money to educate all those new children that are coming in. Is that what you're trying to say?
No.
So what is the number going to provide to you to help you make that decision?
I just want to see what the figures are. You apparently have more numbers and more figures than I do. I was not allowed, I guess would be the word, to participate in the Pilot Committee. Mr., I'm sorry, the mayor said that I couldn't be a part of that, that committee. He had suggested Dan and Mary and so forth. And again, I'm not putting words in your mouth, I don't want you to put words in mine. I just want to see, apparently, nobody agreed to a 56% figure, although that was what you came up and stated. Nobody from, I'm looking at Dan, I'm looking at Mary, are, these were the three people that were in that room.
We did talk about the 56%.
Talk and agree are two different things.
We actually did, and Ms. Batko, your statement in that meeting was, well, that's a starting point. That was the starting point that the Board of Education wanted. It was coming back to the council. We need to have a meeting with this council, and we can go back and forth on what, what's going to be done, and, you know, Kennedy, America, you could try to put us, our feet on the fire right now and say, do this right now, make an emotion, make a second, and vote on it right now. But I think we need to have a council, a meeting of the full council, to come with the full numbers that Wayne has for the project, the research that Mike and Dan have done. And yes, that'd be great if Amideo can do research on his end as well, and bring it back, and have a meeting with the full council, so we can bounce it back and forth to each one, each other, rather than just coming up here and trying to shove a resolution down our throats right here at the meeting. There's three people at this council, up here on the council that weren't in those meetings. And yeah, we, we like the concept of certain things, but it needs to be discussed at a table with numbers and like, like we had at the subcommittee meetings.
And, and I don't want you up here thinking that I'm opposed to seeing the Board of Education get, get money, get, get a percentage of this percent. I'm not saying that. I just don't have all the numbers. I don't have all the facts. I can't even get really what truly transpired. One person is saying it was agreed upon, then it was talked about. I'm not, I wouldn't be doing my job up here if, if I didn't make sure that all this was accurate and true. You wouldn't do that on the Board of Education.
No, but I wouldn't sit around and wait all this time for someone to get me the numbers. I think I'd be a little more proactive.
I'm pretty pro, Wayne, I'm pretty proactive, right? I'm very proactive.
If your CFO could bring those numbers to a pilot meeting, there's no reason he can't bring it to yours. And it's unfortunate that you were not able to participate, because I did recommend at the pilot meetings that we make these public for the whole council to participate, and it was your side of the room that did not want to do it. And I was told, and I was told, I was told by someone in your committee that it's up to the committee to bring back the information to the entire bodies, which I did do at the Board of Education, and we did discuss it at a public meeting. You keep talking, you want to discuss it as a council, but you keep saying you want to, but you don't. So if you, that's where we're sort of in limbo here. Mr. McEnam was here at the last meeting, and nothing obviously transpired from the previous meeting, and now nothing still has transpired. We're just looking for a decision. If you want to do it, fine. If you don't, that's okay. We just want to proceed so that we know what's going to happen. This money is coming from the same people, and while Club Benet is going to impact us, this needs, the reason we wanted to start with Club Benet is that's coming, these students are going to be here in September. The point is not yet here, but it's good to use this as a basis, the smaller project, as to where we're going. And we are going to get a considerably higher number of students from there than we already had in the district. And that's going to happen in September.
From the point or from the Morgan?
I'm just talking about the Club Benet one.
Okay.
I'm just talking about the Club Benet.
I'm not disputing any of that.
So the point is, I don't know, we're looking at a theory here more than we are at a number, per se. So if you can discuss a theory, Dan, you're on the committee, Mary on the committee, what is your recommendation to your council? I mean, we have discussed this at the board level many times.
Just to be, just to be clarity, just for clarity, I am not on the committee, okay? Just want to make sure you understand that. Thank you.
I wasn't talking to you.
You said Dan.
I'm sorry, Dan Buchanan.
Wrong Dan.
Dan Buchanan. I'm sorry.
I guess the other Dan.
I was talking to Dan Buchanan.
Sorry.
And I just wanted to interject very quickly.
No, I was not implying at all that you were on the committee.
I just wanted to interject very quickly and make it clear that the idea of making those meetings public, I was told, I wasn't even told, I didn't even get a chance to speak in reference to who was appointed to the committee, and the mayor immediately, whether he knew whether I wanted to be a part of it or not, I was told immediately, I cannot serve on that committee, it will be a conflict of interest, before I even, although I feel that I could definitely add a lot of insight, having worked for the Board of Education as a teacher for over 15 years, and I know the issues and the problems, and some of the things that you face as a board, I was absolutely barred from being allowed to participate in that.
Okay, but you're here at a public meeting.
I am.
I'm sure the council would like your input, since you're knowledgeable on it. Do you have a recommendation for the council?
Do I have a recommendation for that? I would like to know what the discussions are. I would like to know what the Board of Education's plans are. If I was in that room, being able to be a part of that committee, I'd have a ton of questions that would take this meeting well into the night.
So you want to know if the money is distributed, say, as it is today in property taxes, what we would do with the money?
There's a ton of different questions that I would have.
I mean, the money would go to educating the children, no different than the tax base. I mean, I don't, you can never pinpoint any specific penny that we spend to any specific item.
I would just be curious at some of the ideas, some of your, I mean, we have an issue when it comes to overpopulation. We can be here for, I'm glad to see that you actually, at your last Board of Education meeting, set up a committee, it looks like, to turn around and look at the impact, the overcrowding and the overpopulation of all of our schools had. I think that's all a step in the right direction. Right now, there's absolutely nobody in those residents at all yet. There were 12 students, I believe, that used to be a part of the Morgan, the Morgan, the bungalows and the shacks that were there. We don't have any new students or human beings in that, in that building yet. What are your ideas? I'm curious to see what the problem solving, we've gone down the Board of Education path of redistricting in the past. I'm just curious. But that's all on the side. I still just want numbers from Wayne. I mean, this could be a whole different, we can sit here and say, well, you didn't get them, you weren't proactive. I'm very proactive.
What type of numbers are you looking for? Revenue numbers?
I want to see revenue numbers. I want to see what other percentages have been allocated. Again, we haven't done a residential pilot before, what some of the costs to the borough are going to be, what are some of the things that you're looking to do? What cost would that be? Would additional 1%, 2%, 8%, 20% be manageable for what you have planned as a Board of Education for the influx of students? There's a ton of different things. I want to take a look at the figures. You wouldn't make a decision as a Board of Education member to do something without seeing numbers. You're a numbers woman. You're very intelligent. You're very smart. Would you do this? Would you turn around and just turn, approve an arbitrary figure just because somebody came to the mic and said, I want to know right now?
But this isn't an arbitrary figure. We're looking at a theory and a process. We're not looking for a concrete number from you, because you won't know that number by September. You're not going to know what that revenue is from there. Did you read the financial contract for Club Benet on the new, the new thing? So you know by reading that revenue contract, it's all based on revenue. So you will never, you're not going to know that dollar amount.
I have a little bit more of a ballpark. I saw those figures, and I do have a lot of questions. I think that in asking Wayne some of these questions about what kind of numbers, figures, facts, tax, what that land tax is going to be, what the possibility of the land tax is going to be as more, I just have some questions. Maybe because I'm novice at this, maybe because it's the first time that I'm taking a look at these types of pilot programs, and these figures and these facts. I'm a language arts teacher. I don't think it's out of the realm to ask Wayne to let me see some numbers.
But in that, in that financial contract, there were figures. It's stated right in that contract what the estimated revenue would be.
I've looked at those, and I've also looked at, I just had a CERA meeting with a very detailed breakdown from Phoenix Advisors about what that's going to be as well. Just trying to do my due diligence, that's all. And try and find out what the communication was at that committee. I get the impression that you seem to think that we're trying, or I'm trying, or anyone up here is trying to stall you from getting monies that you would need. I don't think that's the case.
No, I'm not, I don't think you're trying to stall us from getting money. It's just like the decision-making process looks stalled. It's not, this isn't about money.
I have found out one thing, in a year of being here, government works exceptionally slow. Very, very slow. I can ask for money for asphalt, it could take me three months to get it. I mean, it's not anything intentional. It's not that, I'm not trying to stall the process. Are you trying to stall the process? I'm not trying to stall the process.
Mayor, I have a question. Mr. Dupont, did you contact Helmeta or look into Helmeta? It's amazing. Helmeta, a small town, came up with a pilot program, allowed for students, they allowed for an additional students if their projection wasn't right. They're obviously doing it, so with that gray area, they must have figured out how to get through that foggy area.
Well, that's, that's why I asked, Mr. Dupont.
We asked that about two months ago for that, and we still didn't get an answer on that. And it's amazing, Vicki, that you don't talk to Mary or Dan, because you talk to them about everything else. I can't believe you didn't ask them what went on at that pilot program.
Well, apparently, even in talking, you can't get a straight answer here either. I mean, one minute I'm being told that 56% was agreed upon, now the word agreed went to talked. So I don't understand, I like the idea, who was it that said, Dan, you said you wanted to call a council meeting to turn around and discuss what happened within that committee? That's fine. Ms. Batko, you said you wanted to make it public. I didn't have an issue with that. I wasn't even allowed to take part in it. I was told absolutely not. All I'm trying to do, all I asked for was some, from figures, whether you understand it better than I do, that's great. I'm just trying to do my job. I'm really not. I'm really not. I'm really not. I'm truly, truly not trying to complicate anything. The same answer that I had for Mr. McEnam up here last time you came was the same response I gave. I don't have what I asked for. I have a lot of information about the point now after sitting through my CERA meeting. Let's, let's have a meeting with the council. Let's sit down and let's talk about it. This is the first time I'm hearing about an attorney opinion right now and what's going on.
I think we understand where we are. I'm not going to bring this issue up, the reorganization meeting, I know you have other things to do, but the subsequent meeting to that in January, I hope that that's enough time for you to get that information and be able to make a decision, because we'll be back. We just want to, I would like to see the council make a vote, and then the voters know We just want to, I would like to see the council make a vote, and then the voters know that the board is, and we know that, and we will press on and we'll do what we can to educate children as we have.
Mike, whatever information that Amidio and the rest of your professional staff are able to put together, if you would do me a favor and share that with the governing body.
Certainly.
Collectively and individually so that everybody gets a copy, and then, of course, the clerk and the professionals have their copy.
Sure. Fine. I appreciate your time tonight, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I just like to make a comment. First, just one, a couple of comments. The committee wasn't even formed over a year ago. No, it wasn't. The committee was only formed a couple of months ago. I don't know, who were you meeting with?
Art and Dan.
For a year, Dan?
You were in the committee a few months ago.
No, the committee was only formed, I think you better check the minutes.
Mary.
I'm telling you that, before I was elected?
Yep.
How's that possible? I've been sitting here six years, Mayor.
Last year.
Well, I think you should check the minutes. No committee was ever formed until a few months ago. You may have been meeting with somebody, but they did not, it was never voted on by this council.
Phil, just do me a favor, check your records.
Dan, did you meet before this committee was formed?
Art and I met, I don't know if it was last year or the end of the year, a brief meeting. It was one meeting, and then a few months into the year, that's when the mayor made an official committee for it and had Art as the head of the committee.
But that wasn't a few months ago. I mean, our first meeting as a committee, with, with the committee being formed and the council voting on it, we did, I came into that meeting and my suggestion was that we do it per student.
Right, but you weren't at, you weren't on the previous meeting, you just joined the second.
Well, again...
All right, let's move this forward. The important thing is what the end result will, is going to be. So, anything else, Mary?
No, I just like to say that the, again, the premise of the first meeting was that we would definitely, the consensus was go with the percentage as opposed to a per-student fee, which is something I thought would be better. You know, that would eliminate any, you know, ambiguity. We know how many kids we have, we know how much money. Everybody else felt that that was speculative, that we should stick with a thing, and we agreed to that. At the next meeting was the first time Wayne came in, and he had numbers based strictly on 56%, but it really wasn't any numbers because, as you said, the, we wouldn't even know, this whole pilot is based on how many apartments are actually rented. So, we wouldn't be able to speculate as to how much money the town would even be getting, much less with the Board of Education. So, anything that you did get would be a year afterwards. We'd have to see, okay, what we got in 2016, and then in 2017, you would get that part because we wouldn't know what 56% of it was until we found out what we got. So, to say that, you know, we need these figures to do the Board of Education budget, we won't know those figures, period. And as far as the 56%, that is, it was discussed at a meeting, it was something that the Board of Education had requested. I said I would go along with the percentage, I said it would be up to the council to vote on what that would be. I asked, one of the things Wayne was going to check into is that what would it, how would it work out? Excuse me, Mayor, I have the floor.
The only thing I'm going to ask is...
Excuse me, Mayor, I have the floor.
Mary, I'm going to, I'm going to interrupt you for a moment to ask a favor. Council President McGill asked if this could be a meeting of some brevity, but we have a number of things, we have to go from here to police interviews, and then we have to go to closed session. Councilman Melendez has a important conference call at 10 minutes after 8:00. So, this discussion on the pilot, I'd like to hold it over for another day if everybody's in agreement. Not to be rude, it's just we need to fit in a number of things tonight, this is the last meeting of the year. And so, I'm just asking consideration for the request of the council president so that Councilman Melendez can get to his conference call and so that we can get to the rest of the people. So, please, please bear that in mind.
Okay. I'll stop now. I just think that trying to push through a vote right now without the numbers is very foolhardy. Thank you.
Okay. With that...
We're going to go to the police interviews first?
Okay. Yes. We're going to go into closed session for interviews of police officers. It won't be long, and then, are we doing both things? Both closed sessions?
Yeah.
Or one?
Only one.
Only one, okay.
Now, therefore, being resolved by the mayor and Borough Council, Middlesex, by the Borough CERA County Middlesex, the public portion of this meeting is hereby adjourned and ordered that the governing body may meet in closed private session for approximately 15 minutes to discuss the following personnel, contract negotiations, litigation. Following the conclusion of said closed session, the governing body shall reconvene the open portion of this public meeting to consider the area and the matters which may be properly brought before this time. The nature and content of the discussion which occurs in closed session shall be made public as such time as the need for non-disclosure no longer exists. This resolution shall take effect immediately.
Is there a motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Steve and Pat, if you'd go into room 310, please.
And I still think that maybe one of the, the, uh, mission that we were, we were always waiting for is first. It was way this term meeting. I can't believe it's true. I mean, it was back to one of those. I'm sure with the penalty. And she brings that she's, she's doing the. And I still think after Brady won that, the, uh, mission that we were, we were always waiting for is first. It was way this term meeting. I can't believe it's true. It wasn't so much being relaxed, like, I guess, they had, they were the shots. Every game suspension. That's a major, a major change in the, the, uh, the. But everybody said something to them, okay, that wouldn't be wrong. We know it's, we know it's right. They say. They say he was. I don't see a hell of a case against that. Be there. You know, it's true. And I still think that maybe one of the, the, uh, mission that we were, we were always waiting for is first. It was way this term meeting. I can't believe it's true. It wasn't so much being relaxed, like, I guess, they had, they were the shots. Every game suspension. That's a major, a major change in the, the, uh, the. But everybody said something to them, okay, that wouldn't be wrong. Say, you can't. We know it's, we know it's right. They say. They say he was. I don't see a hell of a case against that. Be there. Yeah, it's set in my stomach, so. You remember, yeah? Can I, can I take it? What? Change. I tell you what, if you ever stop chewing candy, anything from there, we're throwing up at me. Please leave it, I'll stop chewing candy. It's so bad. Where we gash this? Dude, can't one of these make you feel? I did, as a matter of fact, when you called me, I was reading a book. Yeah, yeah. As a matter of fact, we saw you wrote about that. Yeah, yeah. I saw that one. You sent the email? No, I, I, I said, yeah, someone sent it in the email, connecting the heads. There you go. It's rated too bad. Yeah, well, it's rated too bad. I tell you what, if you ever stop chewing candy, anything from there, we're throwing up at me. Please leave it, I'll stop chewing candy. It's so bad. Where we gash this? You're talking to us there? You got a mission on your own? I'm sure that you like to play. 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 Where we gash this? There's other ones there? You got a mission on your own? I'm sure that you like to play. I'm sure that you like to play. Dude, can't one of these make you feel? I did, as a matter of fact, when you called me, I was reading a book. Yeah, yeah. As a matter of fact, we saw you wrote about that. Yeah, yeah. I saw that one. You sent the email? No, I, I, I said, yeah, someone sent it in the email, connecting the heads. There you go. It's rated too bad. Yeah, well, it's rated too bad. I don't know. I don't know. Remember now, you never smelled once. Where the campers? No, no. He's a real snowed man. He's a queen to the air. The fire's blue. When we shed the shirt. They said last year, we were. They said last year. 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 Remember now, you never smelled once. Where the campers? No, no. He's a real snowed man. He's a queen to the air. The fire's blue. When we shed the shirt. They said last year. 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 He's clean to the air. The fire's blue. When we shed the shirt. They said last year. 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 Years ago, you could have had a couple of smacks, right?
Yeah.
Okay, can I have a motion to go back into open?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This is the time of the meeting, the last meeting of the year, where we thank the people for their service. Being an elected official is not an easy task. You're, you're kind of always, always out there and your, your actions are always watched and your actions are always judged. So with that, it takes a special type of person, one with, with courage, um, to do this, in my humble opinion. So with that, I would, if the council would please stand, with that, I'd like to present this to David McGill for distinguished service rendered as a member of the Saraville Borough Council from two thousand thirteen to two thousand fifteen. And inscribed on it is Kennedy O'Brien, Mayor, the Borough Council, Dan Buchanan, Victoria Kilpatrick, Ricky Melendez, Mary Novak, and Arthur Rittenhouse. Dave? Secondly, uh, I'd like to present this to Ricky Melendez for his distinguished service as a member of our Borough Council from two thousand thirteen to two thousand fifteen. I thank you for your service. We haven't always gotten along, but that's the nature of democracy. Congratulations. Well, look, if you got clean up, I'm gonna let the younger colleague, 'cause he also has to get to an international conference call.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Melendez.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, I'll make this brief. Um, it was a great opportunity to, uh, sit up here with these fine people. Um, we didn't always get along, but I think my goal was to come up here and will some power in some ways. And, um, I think we made some improvements in the area of, uh, my expertise, which is technology. Um, my hope is in the future, we do attract more of a diverse type of person to be on the council because diversity, in my belief, is gonna make us stronger and better. Um, and it was an exciting time for me. Um, I was a little nervous in the beginning because Terry is really tough, uh, Steve, and, uh, so you guys better watch out and have your, uh, but she's so beautiful to look at, so it's very easy to sit up here and, and take that, so. Um, I, again, I, I am very grateful for the opportunity. I, I wish, uh, Mr. Limbo and Mr. Grillo, um, a lot of success. Um, I hope you guys come in with an open mind, an open heart, 'cause we do live here, this is our town. I'm still here, I'm not going anywhere, so, um, again, and I just wanna thank Mr. McGill for his courage, his strength, um, running with him and just being with this man every day, um, pushing me, uh, making me wanna be better, was one of the, uh, greatest things I'm never gonna forget for the rest of my life. So, um, again, I thank you, Saraville, I thank you, my colleagues, Mayor, and I wish everyone a very happy Merry Christmas.
Thank you. With that, council president?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, mine is short and sweet. Um, we all know that Terry is beautiful, I don't know why Ricky brought that up again, but it has been an honor and a privilege to work for the people of Saraville and work up here with my, uh, confederates, both Republican and Democrat. Uh, it's been an eye-opener, and what I mean by that is, is there's a lot of moving parts to make this borough work, and most of the people who sit out there or out on the street have no idea what it takes to run this borough. Uh, my best to everyone, I've enjoyed myself, I've been treated very honorably over the last three years. I wish I could have done more for you. So with that, uh, with the season, everyone have a very safe and happy Merry Christmas, God bless you.
Everyone, if we'd all stand. All right, you guys. So with that, we will go to old business, Terry?
Okay. We have a public hearing on the following ordinances, ordinance number three fourteen dash fifteen, an ordinance to supplement and amend chapter fourteen, water and sewer, section sixteen point one of the revised general ordinances of the borough of Saraville nineteen eighty-six, as supplemented and amended.
This time, I'm gonna open the public portion for questions or comments on this ordinance. Are there any questions or comments? Being no questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion.
I move the public hearing be closed, the ordinance be adopted on second and final reading and advertised according to law.
Is there a second?
Mayor, if I might, uh, is it possible, I don't think I can do this since I am going out the door, but, uh, is it possible to table it or just put this away?
Well, you can't table it, 'cause you won't be here to take it off the table.
Right, I mean, or to put it away until next year.
Well, there's been a motion, there's been a motion made, I, I don't even know what the protocol would be for this. Councilman, uh, counselor?
Well, you know, again, there is, um, there's gonna be a new, uh, council coming in play, there's been a motion to approve it, I, I don't think there's been a second, has there?
No.
Not yet.
Okay, is there a second?
Is there a second? Well, then it dies for lack of a second.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next item, Terry?
Public hearing on ordinance number three fifteen dash fifteen, ordinance of the borough of Saraville County, Middlesex State of New Jersey, approving the application for a long-term tax exemption and authorizing the execution of a financial agreement with MEC Infrastructure Urban Renewal LLC.
This time, I'm gonna open the public portion for questions or comments on this ordinance. Are there any questions or comments? Being no questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion.
I move the public hearing be closed, the ordinance adopted on second and final reading and advertised according to law.
Is there a second? Roll call?
That was Councilwoman Novak?
No, uh, Mr. McGill.
McGill, thank you. I heard two at one time, I'm sorry. Um, Councilperson Buchanan?
Yes.
Kilpatrick?
Yes.
McGill?
Yes.
Melendez?
Yes.
Novak?
Yes.
Rittenhouse?
Yes.
Public hearing on ordinance number three sixteen dash fifteen, ordinance amending chapter two administration to rename subsection two dash forty-nine media advisory board of the revised general ordinances of borough of Saraville to the technology board.
This time, I'm gonna open this ordinance to questions or comments from the public, are there questions or comments? Being no questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion.
I move the public hearing be closed, the ordinance adopted on second and final reading and advertised according to law.
Second.
Roll call?
Councilperson Buchanan?
Yes.
Kilpatrick?
Yes.
McGill?
Yes.
Melendez?
Yes.
Novak?
Yes.
Rittenhouse?
Yes.
Okay, with that, I'd like to welcome MEC Infrastructure and Urban Renewal to the borough of Saraville. Thank you for choosing Saraville for your project. We hope your experience here is good and positive, and, uh, again, welcome, welcome to Saraville. Uh, with that, we'll go to the next, uh, item.
Mayor, the next item is, uh, under new business, um, just for discussion purposes only at this point, this will be for a resolution to be read and full, um, during that portion of the meeting, uh, authorizing the renewal of a contract with Reliance Insurance Group LLC as the borough's consultant for health, dental, and prescription benefits for the year two thousand and sixteen. Again, Mayor, this is just for discussion, if there is any.
Okay, is there any discussion? Next item?
The same with this resolution, uh, Mayor, this will be a resolution for authorization to execute a contract with ETNA for medical and dental benefits, um, and Benacard for prescription benefits for the year two thousand and sixteen.
Is there any discussion? Okay, uh, this time, I'm gonna open the public portion for any questions on consent agenda items. Barbara?
Barbara Kilcom is twenty-two Schmitt Street. Um, number two oh fifteen, three fifteen nine, um, could you elaborate, what is that consent order?
Uh, Jay, do you have the answer to that?
Maybe Wayne is better.
Wayne?
Wayne.
Three fifteen?
Mike?
Mike?
Everybody's passing the buck, okay? Somebody must have an answer.
Uh, yeah, yeah, this is a, uh, an agreement, uh, between Red Oak Power that disputed some of the water charges. Uh, there were discussions between Wayne and the water charges, uh, together with the, um, the trees that they had to plant. After following discussions with Wayne as to the water charges that, that were in dispute, uh, there was a resolution, uh, that they would withdraw that claim, and this is the release that, that concerns that.
I see, so.
It, it benefits the borough, Barbara.
Okay. Uh, the next item was, um, I lost my place.
You were on three fifty-nine.
The cross access easement agreement.
What number?
Between, uh, three sixty-one.
Okay. With what number?
Three sixty-one. Three sixty-one.
Oh, three sixty-one. Go ahead, uh, counselor.
Jay.
Jay, if you would.
Sure. Uh, thank you, Mayor. Barbara, this is the MacArthur Manor, the old Seren Fisher twenty row, twenty house on, uh, MacArthur Avenue, they have an existing driveway that encroaches on the adjacent borough property. The, the property's gone into foreclosure, the bank that took it over raised this issue. It's an eas, it's, it's an access that's been there for years, but there was never any formal easement agreement to allow that driveway to remain, so that was discussed, and this is formally gonna grant an easement to a driveway that's been there for a number of years.
I see, that, that's the one that leads into the park, or part of it?
One side leads into the park, the other side is just a driveway right into that, the existing building.
Okay, and the next one is three sixty-four, um, the Windy Wood Pump Station Project, hasn't that been under?
Barbara, this has been in the works for a number of years.
I was just gonna say.
There's an existing pumping station that is in very poor condition, the borough is going to expand it, in order to expand it, they had to obtain an easement to allow for the work to take place in that area, and there's been a number of negotiations with that property owner, there were a number of issues that came up, other litigation issues that impacted this, finally, it's been resolved, so the borough is gonna get the easement so they can reconstruct the pump station. Barbara, this has been, this has been, uh, in discussion for months and months, so.
But I think that's a good thing.
Yeah, it's a great thing, it's a great benefit.
Okay. Uh, next is three sixty-five, um, I didn't know what they were going to do with the storage building, I mean, the bids were, they're rejecting the bids, but.
Jay?
What is that for Ford Grumpy?
Barbara, there, we're gonna use it initially as a salt storage facility, and in the future, possibly just for building storage, but it's a fabric-type structure, the borough built the foundation, the company was gonna come in and put a fabric structure that could be used for salt storage.
Like a tent, I see.
Exactly, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any, uh, other questions or comments on consent agenda items? There being no other questions, I'll entertain a motion, uh, council president.
Thank you, Mayor. Move the public hearing be closed, and the consent agenda resolutions be approved on roll call vote.
Second.
Roll call?
Councilperson Buchanan?
Yes.
Kilpatrick?
Yes.
McGill?
Yes.
Melendez?
Yes.
Novak?
Yes.
Rittenhouse?
Yes.
Okay, at this time, I'm gonna open the public portion for questions or comments on any and all issues.
No, Mayor, we need to, we have resolutions to be read and full.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mike.
Thank you.
Uh, Mayor, with respect to resolution two thousand fifteen dash three sixty-seven, be it resolved that the proper borough officials are hereby authorized and directed to execute the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen municipal alliance grant application to be submitted by the Saraville Alliance for Family Education to Middlesex County Department of Community Affairs, Office of Human Services, and the Governor's Council on Alcoholism and Drug Abuse.
Is there a second?
I'd open to the public first, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry, open to the public for questions or comments. Is there, yes.
Matthew Sockel, Sixth Wildhedge Lane, uh, I just had a question about the ordinance three fourteen fifteen, so this has, this has been not approved, or is it gonna come up again?
No, 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 this is only for resolution, it was just read and full.
This is just for the three resolutions that we're working on right now.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. Give it, give it a minute, uh, and when I open up the public portion, come up, Matthew, okay? Uh, so on, on, on two thousand fifteen, three sixty-seven, are there any questions? There being no questions, is there a second?
Who moved that one, Mayor? We have to close the public portion and adopt, sorry.
I move that the public portion be closed and the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Roll call?
Councilperson Buchanan?
Yes.
Kilpatrick?
Yes.
McGill?
Yes.
Melendez?
Yes.
Novak?
Yes.
Rittenhouse?
Yes.
This is the grant that Elise Barone, uh.
That was, yes.
Uh, a, a, a big thank you to, uh, Elise Barone for getting this grant. Next item, Terry?
She also got an additional eight thousand dollars.
Mayor, this is resolution two thousand fifteen, three sixty-eight, resolution proving the award of an insurance broker, produce consultant, broker contract for employee benefits, whereas borough of Saraville requires the services of the insurance broker of record in order to oversee the borough's employees' benefits program, including medical, prescription, dental, vision, and other insurance needs as determined by the borough, whereas Reliance Insurance Group, a division of AccurSure LLC brokers qualified to provide the above referenced services and response was deemed the most advantageous to the borough in accordance with all factors considered, and be it further resolved that her borough is authorized and directed to execute the broker of record authorization annex heretofore and to cause notice of this decision to be published in accordance with NJSA forty-eight, colon, eleven, dash, five, one, A, sub-paragraph, I. Now therefore, be resolved by the borough that the aforementioned recitals are incorporated herein as a full, full, fully set forth, the agreement is hereby authorized and approved. Reliance Insurance Company, a division of AccurSure, is hereby appointed to represent the borough as broker of record for employee benefits, including medical, prescription, dental, and vision. The borough is hereby authorized to execute any and all documents and to take any and all actions necessary to complete and realize the intent and purpose of this resolution. This resolution shall be effective immediately.
I'm gonna open the pub, to the public for any. I'm gonna open the pub, to the public for any question or comment. Being no questions or comment, entertain a motion.
I move the public portion be closed and the resolution be adopted on roll call vote.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilperson Buchanan?
Yes.
Kilpatrick?
Yes.
McGill?
Yes.
Melendez?
Yes.
Novak?
Yes.
Rittenhouse?
Yes.
And mayor, finally, this resolution of 2015-369, therefore being resolved that the bur, proper borough official are hereby authorized and directed to renew the health, dental, and prescription benefit agreements between the Borough of Saraville and Aetna Health Management for employee and retiree, and health, retiring dental benefits, and Benic Card Services LLC for employee and retiree prescription services for a period of January first, 2016 through December thirty-first, 2016.
Is there a motion? Oh, I'm sorry, public portion? Any questions? No questions, is there a motion?
I move the public portion be closed and the resolution be adopted on roll call vote.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilperson Buchanan?
Yes.
Kilpatrick?
Yes.
McGill?
Yes.
Melendez?
Yes.
Novak?
Yes.
Rittenhouse?
Yes.
Okay, this time, will Christina Burt, Victoria Puccio, and Michael Parigi please stand up? Ladies and gentlemen, come forward if you would so we can get you on camera. These are Saraville, the new police hires for the Saraville Police Department. So if you'd stand here and let the, wave to the camera, let your, let your parents see you, your kids see you. All right, so you three, the, the two most important people in the borough are the clerk and the CFO, 'cause they get you your paychecks. All right, but welcome aboard, and we know you'll do well. So, thank you for choosing Saraville. Just so the public knows, all three are Saraville residents. With that, I'm now gonna open the public portion for questions or comments on any and all issues. Are there any questions or comments? Yes.
Matthew Sockel, Sixth Wildhead Lane. My question was about ordinance three fourteen fifteen, so this has been disapproved? Or is it gonna be brought up again?
Uh, it'll be brought up again. It died for a second, Matthew. So after January first, the fir, come to the, when's the first meeting after?
January eleventh.
January eleventh. It, it'll probably be on here again.
Okay.
Okay? And we'll have a new council. Thank you, Matthew.
Probably. It's a new year.
Yes, that's what I thought.
Okay, we're gonna, we're, let's close this, the council meeting. Is there a motion to close? Oh, is there anybody else for the public portion? Then I'll take a motion to close the public portion.
Make a motion to close the public portion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion to adjourn?
Before we do that, at the last council meeting, I spoke briefly about having the future housing developments, a portion of that be reserved for veterans. So at this point, I would like to make a motion that the planning board consider allocating twenty percent of future housing developments be reserved for veterans.
I think you need to carry that to the agenda. It doesn't matter, I don't care. Is there a second to this?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed.
I'd just like to do one thing before we leave the business meeting. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Ricky Melendez, effective January first, 2016, as...
Can't do that.
You can't do that.
Not until January.
You can't do it till January first.
Okay.
Thank you, sorry.
Okay. All right, so take a motion to close the...
Move to adjourn.
Council meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, everyone please stand.
Salute to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, just as it is.
Okay, Terry's statement of publication.
Mayor, while the borough attorney is gonna be handing out the agendas for the public, take notes that this agenda session of the mayor and borough council being held on this fourteenth day of December, 2015, has been advertised and posted in accordance with Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter two-three-one, Public Law nineteen seventy-five.
Roll call.
Councilperson Buchanan?
Here.
Kilpatrick?
Here.
McGill?
Yes.
Melendez?
Ricky's in the...
Novak?
Here.
Is he coming back?
Yes.
He may.
But he stepped out at eight twelve. Okay, um, Novak, Novak?
Here.
Rittenhouse?
Here.
Okay, we'll go right to committee reports. If we keep this brief, then the council president will get his, his early Christmas present. Administration of Finance, Councilwoman Novak.
Okay, under B, like approval for, was listed one and two?
Any objection? Next item.
Okay, request for authorization to execute solid waste collection recyclable reimbursement agreements with Camelot Town Lake.
Any objection? Anything else?
I'd just like to say, uh...
Tony, could you close that door, please?
I'd just like to wish everybody a very blessed, safe, healthy Christmas and New Year. And I'd just like to say a few words. I'm sorry Ricky had to leave, he'll be back, but I just wanna say what a pleasure it has been to work with Councilman Melendez and Councilman McGill. Ricky pushed us, dragged us to, into this century with IT. And Dave was probably the most gentlemanly person I have ever met in my life. There wasn't a resident complaint or a, a problem that any one of us had that we couldn't come to Dave, and he would help us with. I... Okay, before I get too choked up, I'd just like to say it's been a pleasure, and thank you very much for your service.
You're quite welcome.
Okay, planning and zoning, Councilman Buchanan.
Thank you, mayor. I move the following minutes and reports be received and filed, the planning board minutes of November fourth, 2015, the board of adjustment minutes of October twenty-eighth, 2015, and November twenty-fourth, 2015, along with the Middlesex County Planning Board minutes of November tenth, 2015.
Is there a second?
Second.
Letter B, receiving file.
Anything else, councilman?
Uh, yeah, a couple of things. One, the, their Saraville Police Auxiliary are looking for volunteers. You can download an application on the saravillepoliceauxx.org, or you can send a letter of interest to Saraville Police Department. Another thing, we talked about this a few months back, and I keep on hearing back and forth from residents regarding several lighting issues, uh, street lighting issues at the Buchanan Riverfront Park, along with other parks. Just wanted to see if we can get a status on where we are in them. There's about ten that are working down in the park, and they're coming on during the day still.
Is, is that the most recent? Because we had people look at it approximately, I believe it was the last Tuesday, and is this something you got past Tuesday?
I just, I got an email this week, as well as a resume coming out.
Okay, we'll make sure we check the lights up at Buchanan Park.
Thank you. What else? Oh, one of the things that, that came up this year, 2015 was an interesting year. One of the things that came up this year was when we had a councilperson bring up an ordinance and then not, not vote for it. I would like to see our council rules changed for next year. If your department, or if your councilperson that brings up an ordinance or a resolution, that you be the first to vote on it, and you go alphabetically from that point forward. Administrative-wise, I don't, I don't see it being an issue. Just start from where that person is and go forward. I, I don't, you know, the political games, they don't need to have them, and I think that would help stop some of them by doing that. And there's nothing prohibiting it, but I'd like to add it to our council rules for January one.
January one, we'll review it again. Anything else, councilman?
Uh, yes. Want to thank the construction department head, Kirk Mick, and all the men and women that worked in the department. It was a great year. I want to thank you for all your assistance and guidance this year, and hope I helped make your department a little bit better. Wish you and your family a great holiday season. Lastly, Dave, you're here. It was great working with you the past three years. You were a great leader as a council president. Your leadership is going to be missed. You did a lot of work for this town behind the scenes. You gave guidance to us all, and I want to thank you for all that you've done for me and for this borough. And...
Thank you.
Thank you for your friendship.
Thank you.
Ricky, he's not here, but in public, I'm gonna say that Ricky, hands down, brought Saraville into the twenty-first century with technology, and it's something that the borough needed for many, many years. And with his expertise, we got there, and we're getting there. With him and Dave, we, we're getting the police radios that, and fire and first aid, the first responder radios, I should say, to make sure that they're safe on the roads. And, you know, I, I first met Ricky with my, my daughter and his son playing T-ball together, in the same league, and, and known him many years. And I want to thank, I know how much it takes away from your family, I just want to thank him for his time and energy and effort, and, and look forward to working with Ricky and Dave in the future to come. Other than that, progress.
Okay, who's second on recreation?
Ricky gave me his report. Ricky gave me his report.
Okay. Go ahead.
In case he wasn't here. There weren't any minutes or anything, but Ricky wanted to, and Jerry wanted, the recreation department would like to thank everyone who participated or attended our holiday celebration parade. It was a wonderful time, bands playing, chorus is singing holiday songs, along with holiday floats from many local organizations. We look forward to next year to make the event even better. The Saraville Rec Toy Drive distribution with Serna and Mrs. Claus was Friday, December eleventh. This year, we distribute toys to over one hundred children from the Saraville schools. The rec department would like to thank the Recreation Advisory Board and all those who donated toys or gifts, gift cards to this event. And registration for Mommy and Me at the Recreation Center and Little Kids Playtime at Kennedy Park is going Monday to Friday, eight to four, until January eighteenth. You can also register online at saravillerec.com anytime until January eighteenth. Other than that...
Thank you. Public Works, Councilwoman Kilpatrick.
Thank you, mayor. I move the following minutes or reports be received and filed, the Middlesex County Solid Waste Advisory Council minutes of November tenth, 2015.
Second.
Anything else?
Yes, just a couple of things. Once again, thank you to everybody that was involved in the Holiday Lights Parade. I had heard so many positive things about having the parade come back. While Winterfest was great, Winterfest does often have to deal with, you know, the rain, the snow, and the ice, and, you know, it didn't get the luck of seventy-degree weather like we've had in the last week. But it was absolutely, even though it was a short route, hopefully we can keep bringing it back and making it larger and larger again. It was a beautiful, beautiful event and great performances, and it's just great to see everybody out again on the streets of, to celebrate Saraville and the holidays. And then, very briefly, because everyone has said such amazing things, I don't, I don't want to get choked up like Mary, but to have my first year sitting up here, Dave and Ricky have just been a force for me and friends, and somebody I can look to when I'm not quite certain of exactly how agenda meetings and business meetings change. And I knew whenever I picked up the phone and I needed assistance that they were there. Ricky being able to bring us into the twenty-first century, I, I don't even know if we're technically in twenty-first century yet, but we're getting there really, really close. To not have these two gentlemen up there, they will be missed, but I know that instead of seeing the side of their face, I'll see the front of their face sitting in those pews and looking out and always being a force here in Saraville. I look forward to working with Mr. Limbo and with Mr. Grillo. But for right now, I just want to say thank you both to Dave and to Ricky as my friends and amazing council people. That's all. Progress.
Thank you. Water and Sewer, Councilman Rittenhouse.
Thank you, mayor. And I'd also like to extend my congratulations to Dave and to Ricky, and thank them for their service and their time on the council. The parade was excellent, as everybody said. It was nice, it was nice to have that nice weather. Just want to thank the veterans groups, the Veterans Alliance, the Pearl Harbor Service that was held on December seventh out in front, was a very nice program. And also, our honor guard participated in Edison on Saturday. It was National Reefs Across America Day, and they participate, and they have done it for several years, on Woodbridge Avenue at St. James, I believe, is the, the church, which is a three-hundred-year-old church. I also had the honor of participating in Reefs Across America, my family's burial ground that was destroyed five years ago in Homedale, the American Legion post from Middletown, both the VFW and the American Legion participated in that. And I just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, happy holidays, thank all of our employees for the great jobs that they've done all through the year. Thank you.
Thank you. Public Safety, Council President.
Thank you, mayor. Nothing to report at this time, just a couple of comments. The best of luck to, to Pat Limbo and Steve Grillo. I think both of you will do a fine job up here. Two good men, and you fit in well with the council. I wish I could have done more for public safety. Your time wasn't there. I wish everyone the best and all our first responders, stay safe. And last but not least, before, obviously, I wish everyone a very, very Merry Christmas, but at least now, I don't have to listen to people when I'm with Mr. Melendez, say, oh, yes, Dave McGill, he's with the cute one. God bless everybody and Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Council President. Under my comments, I want to thank Councilman Melendez and the Council President, Dave McGill, for their service to our community. As I said, being an elected official is never an easy job, and it, it requires courage. And, gentlemen, thank you for your service to our town, and I wish you the very best in what life brings to you next. That being said, I want to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Business Administrators report?
Thank you, mayor. Request received from Verizon for consent to use facilities lawfully erected in public right-of-way for small network nodes in order to increase network data capacity such as the use of antennas two to three foot long mounted on existing utility poles or light poles. I'd like to refer to the borough attorney and engineer.
Okay, next item.
Authorization to execute an agreement with PSENG for the direct install program for the installation of ECMs in the Saraville Public Library.
Next item.
Authorization for the acceptance of the 2016 safety incentive program of the Central Jersey Joint Insurance Fund.
Next item.
Authorization to execute renewal of the residential maintenance grant agreement for the 2016 program year.
Next item.
Notification of a transfer of a Public Works employee to the Water and Sewer Department filling a vacancy.
Next item.
Authorization to appoint a replacement employee as Labor 1 in the Department of Public Works. All the information's in our packets.
Next item.
Authorization to advertise for the receipt of bids for Riddell, Revo, Speedflex, or equivalent youth football helmets with impact monitoring system.
I would like to hold that over till the two new council people come on board. This is a fairly large potential expenditure. My understanding, it can be up to $90,000. I don't know whether that's a verified cost, but I think that we do, just as we held over the water rate, the potential water rate increase, because of the size expenditure on this, I would ask that the governing body hold this over till January 1st, and the new council has the opportunity to study it and to vote effectively on it. Is there any objection to holding this over? Next item.
Authorization to award contract 2015-10 for Kohler 200 REO ZT, or equivalent industrial towable generator, set to America's Generator Inc., Incorporated, Miami, Florida, for their low bid price of $52,000, $40 on the equivalent product.
Next item.
Mayor, I just would like, if I can, to also congratulate, and it's been a pleasure and an honor to work with Council President McGill and Councilman Melendez. I appreciate their professionalism. I really appreciate the way they treated me as a professional, and I wish them all the best of luck in the future.
Thank you. CFO's report, Wayne Krenowski.
First item, first item is a transfer resolution. The second item is my response to the 2016 meeting schedule that was given for review. It's my recommendation that normally the second Monday, December 12th, would be the meeting for 2016. I'm recommending it be pushed to December 19th as the only meeting. The reason being that the November meeting will, next year, will be November 28th, which is after Thanksgiving. This will allow three weeks in between the meeting and the meetings.
Right, get the bills paid.
And then going from December 19th to January 9th, I believe, is our first meeting. It's early in January of 17. This will give an equal time in between. It would be better for...
Any objections to this? Anything else, Wayne?
No, that's all.
Thank you. Borough Engineers report, Jake Cornell.
Thank you, Mayor. You've already adopted resolutions on both items listed, no further action this evening. Thank you.
Okay. Borough Attorney.
No report, Mayor.
Okay, with that, I'm going to open the public portion for questions or comments on any and all items. Are there any questions or comments? Being no questions or comments, I'll...
The public portion be closed.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
With that, I'll call for an adjournment.
No. We have an...
I move for adjournment.
Okay. Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Have a Merry Christmas.
Okay. Oh, yeah.
Chad has gone. Yeah, she turns, next Tuesday, she turns 11. We might even let you go home. Unless it comes, unless it comes... Have a Merry Christmas.